We also... Called to order the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council Monday, November 19th, 2018, 7:00 PM. All councilors are present. Item two, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Rules of Order. We run the meetings under Robert's Rules of Order and other rules and procedures adopted at the organizational meeting held last week. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, October 15th, 2018, regular council meeting. I would request that that be tabled as staff was rather busy with the election.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Item five, City Manager's Report. Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's all about the holidays this month. This week, City Hall and all departments and facilities will be closed for Thursday and Friday, except essential personnel. I do want to take this moment to thank our fire personnel, police, and Public Works, particularly if it snows and very well could. All those folks who have to be out for the holidays when the rest of us get to enjoy, you know, time with family, so very much appreciated. The lighting of the city's Christmas tree will take place at West SK Lighting Park, 4:00 PM on Saturday. Do want to note that this year it's been shifted to Saturday versus the traditional Friday evening time slot input from the Chamber, the Art of Ellsworth and other groups, and plus citizens who felt they couldn't get there at 4:00 on a Friday afternoon because they were still at work or getting home from work. They'd have a request to move it to Saturday. Plus, it coincides with Small Business Saturday, which is a chance to shop local on the 24th, so it all ties in very well together. The Holiday Parade in downtown Ellsworth will start at 10:00 AM on December 1st. Plan your travel routes to avoid the downtown area that morning. Holiday Marketplace is open now until Christmas in the former J&amp;B Atlantic specialty shops. I would say I visited this past Saturday as the Holiday Marketplace was getting up and going. There was a big crowd there for that and the farmer's markets. I encourage people to take advantage of all these things in the holiday season and do your shopping in Ellsworth. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Item six, Committee Reports. If there are any members of any committees that have met in the last month that want to report on those meetings, now's your time to update us. Counselor Moore.
Well, I attended the Harbor Commission meeting with Counselor...again. It was a short meeting. Andrew McCullough was there. He's an engineer, has done a lot of work for the city. He updated the progress on replacing the gas tanks and explained some of the strategies that we might use to obtain favorable bids. And we're cautiously optimistic that maybe the next season we will have a new system that will allow us to sell both gas and diesel. See how that goes. It's very important to us. The Army Corps of Engineers has been at the harbor all week and mostly their attention has been focused on the middle buoy, buoy number four, which has been pretty much completely filled in with silt. And I guess by their own estimation, it's about as bad as it can get. So again, cautiously optimistic that perhaps we'll be able to have some dredging done down there. This year, the total income generated at the harbor came to something in excess of $28,000, which is pretty good for us. The harbor officially closed on the 15th, but we did have some gas sales, partly because we have a couple of commercial fishing interests, including the gentleman who owns the fish...I guess you'd call it the sea firm, I guess, out in Union River Bay and elsewhere. And they're very pleased that the city with Harbor Master and our esteemed head of the Highway Department has agreed to keep the docks and the launch ramp open as long as weather permits. And I think these commercial interests are very pleased with that. And it's in our best interest to attract as many commercial fishing interests as possible as that helps us with our negotiations with the state and federal government. The iceeders are in. They work fine. We just can't wait for that river to freeze over so we can see if they work real well. And then it can melt again.
So there's a difference between fine and real well?
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Also, at this time, once a year, we take a minute and list the new committee memberships that are put in place at the organizational meeting that we held last week. This year, those committees consist of the Finance Committee, Counselors Blanchett, Grindel, and Hudson, with an alternate of Counselor Moore; Human Resources, Counselors Fortier, Hamilton, and Hudson; Library Special Collections Committee, myself; Human Services, Counselors Hamilton, Moore, and Phillips; Streetlight Committee, Counselors Blanchett, Fortier, and Hudson; On the Commissions, the Recreation Commission, is Counselor Hamilton and Grindel; Historic Preservation Commission is myself; Harbor Commission, Counselors Moore and Phillips; Ad-Hoc Committees, Solid Waste, Counselors Blanchett and Fortier; Public Safety Planning, Counselors Blanchett, Hamilton, and Phillips; and the Local Roads Ad-Hoc Committee, Counselors Blanchett and Phillips; and the Appointments, the PDCTC Cable TV Consortium, Counselor Fortier with an alternate of Jason Ingles of her IT department; Frenchman Bay Partners is Jennifer Fortier; and the EBDC Business Development Corporation, Ex-official Members Blanchett and David Cole, the City Manager. And we are checking with them now on their bylaws. If a third position is able to be added, if so, that will be Counselor Hudson. That's all I have. Counselor Fortier.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that you consider keeping the EMS Committee as we go through this trial.
Yes, I didn't.
No, no. There's room right to the right of public safety to put it in there. I would like to continue in that capacity from my last year to watch over our partnership and be able to reflect back next fall as to my opinion on what's the next step, along with the other members of that committee. So if you'd consider that, I'd appreciate it.
It has been considered and written down, scribbled here on my notes.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot to put it on that list. That committee is myself, you, and Counselor Phillips.
Thank you.
Item seven, Citizens' Comments. We set this time aside to hear from the citizens of Ellsworth. Will allow three or four minutes on an item that is not on the agenda. No action can be taken on that item because it is not an agenda item, but we would like to hear from you, and if any follow-up is necessary, then we will also do that. So at this time, if there's anyone that would like to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name, and let us know what your thought is.
Good evening. How is everyone? Good?
Well.
Gordon Workman, Three Westwood Drive, Ellsworth. Past five or six years, I've been having issues with my neighbor running runoff water to my property. It's got to the point where two years ago, I contacted the code enforcement office. At that time, no action was taken. Now, additional piping, additional diversion, what have you, has been taking place, and now it's become a flood back behind my house. The gentleman won't do nothing about it. He keeps adding. So I've talked to the code enforcement. Something needs to be done. I just want to put on record. And I'm doing whatever I can do now by diverting that water in a different direction. I have to because it's going to devalue my property, which then in terms of the tax assessing department, it's going to have to reduce my taxes. And the valuation of my property is going to go down. So that means I cannot sell it for what I want to, if I have to. I just want to put that on record. So I'm going to take any action I can to stop the diversion. I've already contacted the subdivision person about it because I'm not in the subdivision. I'm not in that. I'm a separate house, but there should be subdivision rules, I'm assuming, which I don't know about that issue, but I haven't heard word bad, so... I just want you to know that I'm going to take whatever action I can. I have to, and that's going to be a cost on me. The gentleman's not going to change his mind. He's not going to...he doesn't know he's doing wrong. So, put that on record. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gordon.
Yes, Chairman. Since I was involved in that conversation, I am the president of Westwood Hill Homeowners Association. With my broken knee, I haven't got back to you, but next week, I have all the policies and everything, and I'll call you and we'll sit down and talk.
I mean, I'm not part of it, so...
No, I understand that.
Taking care of Peter's stuff for him while he's injured.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi. I'm Julia Van Tresco. I'm an Ellsworth resident and member of the Ellsworth Green Action Team. First, let me congratulate the newly elected members of the council. It's good to see some new faces and especially wonderful to have another woman on the council as well. As I said, I'm a member of the Ellsworth Green Action Team, and for those of you who may not know, we are a subcommittee of the Ellsworth Green Plan Steering Committee, and our focus is on renewable energy and waste reduction. As such, we have drafted and proposed a single-use carryout plastic bag ordinance, also known as a bag ban, for Ellsworth. In an effort to inform and educate the public on our efforts to reduce plastic pollution in the city of Ellsworth, we have held several events, including films, panel discussions, roadside cleanups, et cetera. So with that in mind, I'd like to invite and encourage you all to attend our upcoming event on December 12th at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium. We will be bringing back Madeline Woods of the Shaw Institute, formerly known as the Marine Environmental Research Institute in Blue Hill, for an encore presentation of her wonderfully informative illustrated talk on microplastics in Gulf of Maine. The research Madeline and her team has done is amazing. It is very sobering, and I think you will come away with a deeper understanding and appreciation of why we, our committee and others, are so passionate about reducing the amount of single-use plastics and the pollution that they generate in the city of Ellsworth. Following her presentation, which runs about 20 minutes or so, there will be a panel discussion with Ms. Woods and myself and a local business owner and others to be determined. This discussion will be focusing on our proposed plastic bag ordinance and microplastics in general, and I guess whatever questions that you have. And we strongly urge members of the council to attend and members of the public to attend and bring their questions and concerns and also their support. Again, that's on December 12th at 6:30 in City Hall Auditorium, and we scheduled this particular time because we did hear from a few of you and that the last panel discussion that we participated in was not really at a convenient time for most people to get to. So we're hoping that this would be easier and more convenient for everyone. Yeah, so that's that. Any questions?
Go southwest out.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gene Lyons, and I just want to congratulate Heather and John. Good job. And also Nicole Beck for winning her seat. And I haven't given up. Mr. Moore taught me a long time ago, you're only a loser if you quit, so I'm not quitting.
Thank you, Gene.
Hi, I'm Christine Cotton. I live at 478 Water Street. And what I wanted to address is there's a very bad water problem at the bottom of Tinker Hill. I called City Hall last Wednesday, and they had to send a grader down. It's going...the water goes into the center line, and it freezes overnight, and there's black ice. And then the ice built up after it rained. The next day, at 1:40 in the morning, Thursday morning, the grader came down to clear it off. And then the next day, Thursday, at 11:45, a grader was sent down there to scrape the ice, which was scraped onto my property, big piles of slush, and then a mound of slush this high at the bottom of my driveway, which I went down and asked the gentleman if he could clear it off because I'm not capable of shoveling that off. He did a really good job doing it, and it was very nice of him to do that. This is something I have been complaining about for years. Michelle Gagnon, about three or four years ago, I brought photographs, and she saw it, and she said, "We can't have that. It's got to be fixed." And it's just, it's a problem every year. They have to send graders down. It's dangerous. You know, when people come down Tinker Hill, I said if the police department wants to make money, hide in Jordan's parking lot and watch people coming down Tinker Hill. And the streetlight, there's always a streetlight at the bottom of my driveway that shines on that, so when people come...it's pitch black there now. They never replaced the streetlight when they did the repairs on the electrical lines, when they replaced all the poles. So I'm just, like I said, I have complained about this every year. It's the same problem, the ice buildup. And the other morning, when I went out there, the traffic coming down, one woman came to basically a stop to go through it, and there were five or six cars coming down behind her. And then when everybody started to speed up to drive down the street, tires were spinning. They couldn't get any traction because it was all ice. And it's just, you know, I don't want to see an accident happen, but eventually, that's what's going to take place. And then maybe it'll get fixed. Ever since that house was put up behind me, Patrick Jordan put a house up there, and he graded the driveway, and there's just a big hole down there that's supposed to gather water, but it doesn't. It just builds up on the street, and there's nowhere for it to drain, and it goes out to the center line. It's just, it's very dangerous. And I'd love to see that addressed finally and taken care of.
I'll look into it.
And the streetlight, I've called Emera three times to ask why the streetlight hasn't been replaced. And I know when I called City Hall last week, the secretary said she had called on it. Thought that they had replaced it already, but it still hasn't been done. So if you could address that, I'd really appreciate that. Maybe getting fixed in the spring so we don't have that problem anymore, you know?
Yeah, I'll talk to our folks and...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, there was an accident there. When we went off the road and totaled a vehicle.
I know there was one year. He ended up in that hole that Patrick put there for grading. Maybe it's going to take a serious accident to get something done, but hopefully no one will get hurt.
Anyone else?
My name is Michaeline Ward, and I live on Fieldstone Road, which is off of Shore Road. And with the new construction of rerouting 180, when we come out of Shore Road to make a right turn or a left turn, but mostly often it's a right turn, onto 1A, the cars coming forward who have been stopped on 180 before coming to 1, you know, to make their left, there'd be a left turn, they pull right out in front. I always thought a right turn had the right of way, and I've watched this. This has happened to me many times, but there's going to be accidents there. I don't know if any have happened already, but the cars, you know, who are stopped on 180 to make their left turn to go towards Ellsworth, pull right out on the cars that are making a right turn. And is that the way the traffic routing is supposed to go, or is my correct thinking a right turn has the right of way?
I've always thought the right turn has the right of way.
Right. But it's scary, and I've talked to other people, and they say it has happened to them also. So I'm making a right turn, and all of a sudden, this car is shooting across the road to be right in my lane to make their turn, even though, you know, they may have been sitting there longer than I was, but, you know, I make my quick turn, and they're right there. So I just wanted to report that. I've mentioned that when I've been to the City Hall a few times, and they said there have been reports on that. So I just wanted to bring that up tonight.
If I was king of the world, I'd have a set of traffic lights there and a hot beat.
I know. This is what I'm thinking. There's so much traffic now. There really is a lot of traffic coming down 180 to make that turn, and I'm just wondering if that doesn't require at some point a light.
But no one's ever asked me my opinion on it, so...
Okay.
It would be the state of Maine that would have to determine that, the DOT, correct?
Correct, yeah. If I could add to that, Mr. Chair. Again, my memory isn't what it used to be, but I believe there's a center turning lane there that people kind of check out from 180, go in there, safe zone, until they can merge over to the right.
Until they can merge. Some of them do, but some of them come right into that lane, and I've had to slam on my brakes to keep that car from, you know...
There's only one arrow in that lane, David, and that arrow is for people coming and turning onto Shore Road.
That's right. That's right, yeah.
Their way they shouldn't be, is what you're saying.
That's right.
Okay. I'll go take a look at it, but correct, this is something that the state...the state has to review it for national warrants and see if it's justified, then it has to go through the funding process with the state. I know that they've done some initial analysis on it, along with the 179.
Have there been accidents? Maybe I should come down and just check to see if there have been accidents at that site. I don't know.
Certainly, the DOT and their study would have looked at that as well. I mean, they'll review the site for both safety and mobility, and I'll...if you could leave your name where I could reach you.
Sure.
Let me look into that as well.
Thank you.
Find out what's going on.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
180.
Sorry, 179, right.
Oh, that's where I was confused. Okay.
Yeah, coming Shore Road and then 179. It was 179.
179, right.
As a resident of 179, now that somebody brings it up, you've got about one-tenth of a second to make a decision to go or not, to get off that road. I have sat there for 20 minutes before. I haul concrete out of Albert Jordan's pit road, and you get to there, and sometimes that truck, I mean, you're going 1 mile an hour to get across there, and 10 cars almost pile up into you. So definitely should be looked at, but... And then one other thing, I just wish you guys luck tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing no other takers. Item eight, Presentation of Awards. First one this evening is to Ed Pollack for 30 years of service with the Ellsworth Fire Department. And for that one, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Topper.
Something about us retired firefighters, Ed, we always break stuff.
Boy, he smiled up to our platters.
So I'm really happy to see a big crowd here because Ed wanted to keep this real small and simple, so appreciate you all being here.
How's the scoop off the sunset? That was a dream.
I did agree with him to keep my comments brief, but there are some important little facts about Ed that I would like to share. First of all, a huge thank you to you for 30 years of service. Means a lot. Just a couple of quick tidbits. Ed joined the ranks of the Ellsworth Fire Department, Center Hail Post Company, at the urging of Captain Gary Fortier, who we're here. Not because of safety, because he's crippled and Ed's crippled both, but back in November of 1988, Ed has been a very active firefighter for many years and was even considered for promotion, officer promotion, a paid-on-call firefighter, and also a career firefighter engineer position. Ed, over the years, has been a great asset, and one simple example of that is where he lives in North Ellsworth. He was always an asset to us to give us a first due report well before our rest of our crews were able to make it that distance up there, and that proved to be extremely helpful in many areas. Ed is one of few within the fire department to have been honored with receiving a distinguished service award. He was very instrumental in the outcome of a very serious incident, and for that, he got this award, and a very well-honored award. With that, on behalf of the Ellsworth Fire Department and the Center Hail Post Company, we've got a couple of things for you. The first one is a plaque from the city of Ellsworth, presents this certificate of appreciation to Ed Pollack, and it reads, "In honor of your retirement from the city of Ellsworth Fire Department, after 30 years of service as a paid-on-call firefighter, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. On behalf of a grateful community, thank you for your dedication, commitment, and service to our city, dated this 19th day of November, 2018. Signed by David Cole, City Manager, and Mike Blanchett, Mayor." And another plaque to hang on the wall. It is Ed's shield off of his helmet. Actually, custom-made one, specially for you, and it also reads, "Ed Pollack, in recognition of your 30 years of service to the Ellsworth Fire Department, 1988 to 2018." And his number of... And his number of two. It was very nice to have his family here, but they didn't want to come up to hand with that.
You know, it didn't seem like it was that long ago that Ed was a student in the Ellsworth school system. It's hard to believe that he's been doing this for 30 years.
One real, real quick story. It's a wonder he ever lasted in the fire department because he just began with the fire department and I was helping to instruct him on one of our training burns. And we probably stayed in there together a little bit longer and I kept pushing him, "Get in there, get in there," and melted his blind to off.
Well, I'm pleased to report that Ed was a model student. Model of what, I'm not sure, but. Next on the awards list, Brian Moon for five years of service with the Ellsworth Public Works Department. Brian is not in this evening.
They're getting ready to plow.
And right behind Brian, Kevin Sawyer for 15 years of service with the Ellsworth Public Works Department. You just keep going, don't you? We'll get the awards to them. And lastly, and one very near and dear to me, Small Business Day proclamation for November 24th, 2018. And as Manager Cole alluded to earlier in his report, Small Business Day, it's important to all of the business owners here in Ellsworth. Being a former business person here in town myself, I cannot stress enough the importance of having local shoppers come into your store and purchase rather than doing it online. That money, they earn it generally locally, it's spent locally, and the store owner in turn spends it locally. Very, very important. I won't read the whole proclamation. It's lengthy, but just the first paragraph. "The government of Ellsworth, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States. They're responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017 and employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in this country." And you can drive all over Ellsworth, obviously the two biggest spots, Main Street and High Street and atop Beckwith Hill, and you're going to see the mothers and fathers of Ellsworth busting their butt to keep their doors open for you. So please, take some time and walk into their door and buy your products from them. They'll appreciate it. Thank you. Gretchen, did you want the certificates?
I'll pass that to all of you. Your shops, those that.
You get swag.
Welcome to the councilors.
Thank you.
David.
I got you.
There you go.
Mark.
Again, that, I think the marketplace is a great place to put this, so.
Mark, does that one have the double strike on the bottom? The same Small Business Sadties printed twice? You might want to clean it up before you publicize it. It's so important we put it on there twice. Okay. Oh, I know, you're a former, never mind, I'm going to go there, et cetera.
We'll make sure that these are all over town.
And if you would like a corrected version on that, please let me know. The consent agenda. All items with an asterisk on the agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, especially the new ones, so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Council Order Number 111-803, request of the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal proclaimed deeds. Council Order Number 111-804, discussion and action on the request of the Branch Lake Water Steward to set the Branch Lake Boat and Aeroplane sticker fee at $0 for the calendar year 2019. Council Order Number 111-805, request of the Finance Director for transfer of the defendants-in-rem criminal forfeiture docket number CR-17-1328 to the city of Ellsworth and to allow the Finance Director to deposit these monies into the police forfeiture reserve account upon receipt of the funds. And lastly, Council Order Number 111-806, request of the Ellsworth Board of Appeals to appoint Stephen Shade to the city of Ellsworth Board of Appeals as an alternate member, term due to expire June 30th, 2019. Are there any councilors that would like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. New business, public hearing and action on the following business licenses. VFW number, post number 109, 419 Main Street for renewal of a city Class B license Victular, Liquor, and Amusement and renewal of a state bottle club registration. I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to comment on this application, this would be your time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion, please? Mr. Chairman, move of approval? Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Item 14, Council Order Number 111-807, request of the Public Works Director to award the bid for a one-ton work truck.
Good evening, councilors. Lisa Secklich, Public Works Director. On October 2nd, 2018, a bid opening was held for a one-ton truck. Only one bidder was received. The received bid was significantly over the budgeted cost for this piece of equipment, so council rejected bids at the last regular council meeting. The specs for the trucks were then adjusted and on November 6th, 2018, a bid opening was held again for a one-ton truck. Bidders were to have the truck to the city within 45 days of bid acceptance, so they gave us bids on existing trucks that were on their lots or the option to wait 16 weeks if we, for the exact truck that we specified. Low bid came in from Darling's Auto Mall GMC for 2019 GMC 3500 HD that met the majority of our requested spec, except for that the color was black instead of our requested red. We also asked them to quote a plow and sander for the truck and would like to have those items also included in this acceptance as they were bid on a, like, options and so to see if they could get better prices than we could. And the prices they gave us for those two items were as good or better than what we can get them for. So we're asking for the truck, the plow, and the sander. So at this point, if there's any questions?
Councilors, comments? Councilor Phillips. Is this truck a replacement for the existing one-ton?
No, the existing one-ton is, or the idea is to ultimately use the existing one-ton as a parks or mowing, one-ton, which is how we've been using it in the summertime. And then this would be an additional truck so that the highway crew would have access to a one-ton truck outside of the people that are doing the mowing.
Purpose for the additional truck in the, I mean, for plowing in the wintertime, what in the summertime?
Yes, the one that we currently have is a gas job, as Bernie would put it. And the one we are looking for is a diesel, more horsepower and more torque. The one we currently have doesn't do exceptionally well plowing. So this one is for plowing and then additional uses in the summertime.
Summertime uses being, I know what one-ton is, I mean.
Go ahead, step up.
In some time, Bernie has the report form, it'll be used in some time to haul the little excavator.
Give that.
On the little, on the large, small trailer. We did most of summer this year with the one-ton board, but it doesn't haul that well. It's kind of weak in the towing capacity. It's about three miles to the ounce at best.
I can appreciate that. I own a gas one-ton, yeah.
Yeah. It's not running, it's, she's getting tired, that's all.
How many miles on that existing ballpark, do you know?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five?
Yep.
You've had it a while.
It's been through rebuild plows, Bernie Don. It's going to be.
You'd be plowing, using that along the plow during the winter, is this going to take place?
It's all going to go.
Both trucks?
Yep.
You need both one-ton trucks?
Yep, and part my pickup.
Thank you.
That's what I've been doing.
If not, is there a motion? Councilor Hudson.
I move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award the purchase of a new 2019 GMC Sierra 3500 HD four-wheel-drive, one-ton truck, Fisher XLs plow and Fisher Polycaster standard to the bidder Darling's Auto Mall at a cost of $61,645 to be paid through, to be paid for through the Highway Department capital improvement accounts.
Second that, the additional question that came to mind. Go ahead. Do they still have it in stock?
Yep.
It's rather important. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item 15, Council Order Number 111-808, request of the Public Works Director to approve a five-month lease for a loader and authorize the city manager to sign all documents.
So the Public Works Department is requesting to rent for the duration of approximately five months a loader, a loader equivalent in size to a CAT 924, including a 12-foot pusher. The Public Works Department looked into price quotes for renting this type of equipment. The best price only available loader we could find when we made the phone call was from Rented of Auburn with a price of $4,500 a month and a drop-off pickup fee of $700 for, like, both, the drop-off and the pickup, not each. They have one loader and one pusher available and are scheduled to have it here for December 1st. We have already gone to a three-month agreement for this piece of equipment, but we had to come to council to ask for additional two months because it's over the $15,000 mark. So we're asking that you let us extend it those additional two months. It'll be used to clean the parking lots and downtown area this winter.
And is it mandatory piece of equipment?
Questions? Councilor Phillips. Yes, seeing how I've been away. Do we have a loader that's not working at now? Is that why we're using this?
We have one right now. We used to have two, one for loading sand and one for coming into downtown. The one that we used to load sand has died and actually was sold at auction recently. So we have one currently, which is, again, older and getting tired, and that will be the one that would stay for the salt, loading of the salt. And then we would bring the newer one with the pusher downtown for cleaning up downtown.
This lease is a monthly lease. Is it also hourly-based, unit hours on the machine-based, and if you pass a certain amount is an additional fee?
Yes. How many, do you remember?
Hundred and seventy-six.
Hundred and seventy-six.
Hundred, so you're allowed 176 hours a month?
Yes.
And that's an adequate supply?
Yep.
That's more than we did this last winter and this 176 is more than the one that we rented last winter.
I only had a hundred-hour last year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Councilor Hudson.
I move to approve the request to extend a rental agreement with the Rented of Auburn for a CAT 924 loader with 12-foot pusher at the cost of $4,500 a month for a duration of approximately five months to be paid for through the Highway General Fund Account.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Item 16, Council Order Number 111-809, request of the Public Works Director to award the contract for the transfer station compactor replacement project.
All right. On November 13th, a bid opening was held for the replacement of the compacters, hoppers, and associated equipment at the transfer station. Multiple bids were solicited, but only one bid was received. The single low bid was from Atlantic Recycling Equipment LLC for a total of $123,430. The attached letter from Woodard and Kern is in your packet. Basically, this is to replace the compacters at the transfer station that are the original compacters from 1995?
1990.
1990? That have been in there since 20-plus years. They are getting worn out. The hoppers have holes in them in which the trash is falling through the holes down underneath, making a cleanup mess underneath. And so we are asking, we were, this project, I believe, has been in the works for a few years now, but we were waiting for some of the shellfish to go away. And now that they've gone away, I think it's time to fix the transfer station.
Councilor Fordio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of comments. You're right, this has been a project that's been needed for five years. And one of the things that caused us, and former Councilor Beetham and I hit this every finance committee where we had a bill from our solid waste company, we've watched the tonnage in these compacters go from 17, 17 and a half tons 10 years ago down to 14 to 13 because we don't have the hydraulic compression to load these things. So it's costing us incrementally every time we do a pull and we're not taking a full load. So we're going to save money there, we're going to have a cleaner facility, as you're right, without the shellfish waste eating at all this stuff. I would caution you to check our license because the requirement of the bidder is that we pressure wash and bleach. We're a dry cleanup license. So to David and you, make sure we don't violate DEP, although I'd love to go in there with a hot sokey because it needs it, but.
You'd love to?
There's got to be a way to use our curb stop vacuum system to do the job you have to do, but maintain that not going into the earth.
And I think Atlantic understands that. I did say, you know, they know we need to clean it up under there before they come in, but.
Good. It'll be a job well done when it's done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion? Counselor.
I move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award the bid for the replacement of compacters, hoppers, and associated equipment to Atlantic Recycling Equipment LLC for a contract price of $123,430 and to fund this. for a contract price of $123,430 and to fund this project with funding from the Transfer Station Capital Improvement Fund, 9090900-TAC-59023, in the amount of $110,718, with the additional required funding coming from bond proceeds.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seventeen, Council Order Number 111810, consideration of the city's options in conjunction with the Ticonic property.
Mr. Chair.
One minute, Mr. Cole. There's a lot of people here tonight, I'm assuming, maybe I'm incorrect, but I'm assuming that a lot of you are here to, to speak on this. The only thing that I'm going to ask is if someone ahead of you says something, please don't just make a line that comes up and repeats and repeats and repeats. That's, that's my only request, please, if you would. And I'd like to give everybody time to speak. If, if there are a number of you, we will have to limit it to X amount of minutes so that everybody has an opportunity. Mr. Cole?
Just wanted to note that John Hamer, who represents the city on HR Matters and Union Negotiations, is here tonight for Ed Bearer, who would normally handle this and provided your guidance letter in your packet. John's here on his behalf to answer any questions and give you guidance. His Attorney Bearer's letter does cover three options for your consideration as well. So I just wanted to make that note that John Hamer is here tonight and at your disposal.
Thank you very much. Before I open it to general questions from the public, are there any questions of the council? Mr. Fordio.
I don't have any questions, but I have a few comments. I can't remember whether Counsel Phillips was on the council at that time, but I was. And I always said in the fire service, I'm never going to be the historian, but I have to to put this in context. The city put out an RFP after we, as a council, decided to get rid of this excess, excess property. I get involved in it because it also included two buildings next to my home site on Bridge Hill. So I was very involved in, in this issue. The RFPs that were sent out, as we've just found on a one-ton truck, the first bids that went out, we couldn't afford it. The RFP we put out was a wish list. This is if everything came together, the moons and all the planets surrounded, this is what we hope to get out of this. Weber was the sole bidder. They'd been trying to buy it for years, as information has shown, offered us more than $5,000 earlier on. They spent money, gave us some land, put a foundation and moved it back. All to benefit them, no question. It was to improve the sightline for their convenience store. After we got the one bid, the city management and some councilors sat down and negotiated with Weber as to what the end result was going to be. We understood, we weren't naive, we knew that Weber wasn't going to give us $5,000 for the building, fix it up to a Taj Mahal, and keep it that way forever. That was, you know, it's ludicrous to even think that. We negotiated the best that could be to make sure that the church of Ellsworth Falls, a congregational church, was able to utilize the building, as they were currently at that time, for a used clothing store, thrift shop. If I remember right, Weber agreed to a five-year lease with a five-year extension. That being said, at the end of that 10 years, the building was theirs. The city washed their hands of it onset. You've agreed to a 10-year possible lease for the church, that's as best as we could do. Weber met every requirement. They fixed the building up to then safety code. It was inspected, I believe, the church was allowed to stay there. Did good work out of that building, helped a lot of families. Then, after a while, they closed, they moved out. Weber, at the end of 10 years, had no short-term going into this idea for that building, as I remember it, but they knew long-term that that was an, an important piece of property to add to their already ownership next door. So my take, as someone that was involved in that, is the deed and the two five-year lease agreements met everything that the city council negotiated, city management and council negotiated with Weber at that time. They met every requirement of that agreement. I'm a firefighter, I have a Ticonic hose badge. This building means a lot to me, but I'm not willing to spend taxpayer dollar to buy it, to improve the quality of it, or to move it somewhere else. I will fully support private sector coming in, make an agreement to buy it from Weber, moving it to another site, if they have the finances behind them, if they have the interest and the drive behind them to do that. But I am not willing, in 2005, to spend another nickel of your tax dollar. And I'm not convinced to do that now. It's a part of the history, our historical society would love to have it, I understand that, but they can't keep care of the two buildings they own now. I'm not willing to add a third to that list of buildings that can't be taken care of. We did our work with the blessing of the Historical Preservation Commission, who deals with the listed buildings. It's my opinion personally that at this time, Weber has every right to walk in there with an excavator, and I'll cry when it happens, and demolish that building tomorrow, because they met every obligation of their agreement with the city as signed in 2005. End of history lesson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else before I open it up to the floor? Seeing none? Does anyone that would like to make a comment? Like the citizen comment period of a few minutes ago? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and please give us your opinion.
I will. My name is Judy Vlade, I live in Ellsworth Falls, and I respectfully disagree with Gary. I stand before you this evening representing many, many citizens of Ellsworth and Ellsworth Falls. I have petitions with over 500 signatures of people who are interested in the preservation of this building. Some are residents, some are summer residents, some are taxpayers, but not residents, but they are all expressing interest in this building. The council is faced with making a decision regarding this building. In order to make an informed decision, it's critical to understand the relationship between the city of Ellsworth and the Ticonic Four and Weber Oil. The property on which the Ticonic Four Firehouse sits was transferred to the city in 1888, November 8th. Over the last 130 years, it has provided the community of Ellsworth Falls in many capacities. It has served as home to the Ticonic Number Four Pumper and the Hose Team of Ellsworth Falls. It became a community building which housed meetings, quilting circles, community gatherings. It served as a polling place, a cafeteria for the Ellsworth Falls Schoolhouse, and most recently, before their eviction, it was home to the thrift shop run by the Ellsworth Falls Union Congregational Church. It has touched the hearts and memories of many. In 2005, the two-and-a-half-story building and the footprint on which it sits was sold by the city of Ellsworth to Weber Gas and Energy. The story of the relationship is a long story, and it's steeped in history between these two major characters, Weber Energy and Gas, now Weber Development Corporation, and the Ellsworth City Council. In order to fully understand, we'll go back to the 1880s, pardon me, 1980s, before the city sold the property to Weber. As far back as 1986, Weber Energy and Gas was looking to demolish the building. According to the Ellsworth City Council meeting minutes in '86, an offer of $20,000 was received from Weber Oil Company to purchase the Ellsworth Falls Community House, and they would demolish the building and update their Exxon station on the adjoining lot. The city manager had been advised that their offer was approximately 50% of the true market value, and for that reason, as well as for community sentiment, he recommended the council reject the offer. It was unanimously resolved to reject the offer from Exxon Corporation to purchase and demolish the Ellsworth Falls Community House. Community sentiment was strong, and the council then heard it loud and clear. And in 1986, the council began defending this historic building. Three years later, Weber was still looking for a way to deal with the building. According to the minutes of the Ellsworth Council meeting of September '89, quote, "Exxon has made a proposal to the city that they are willing to provide the funding to move the Ellsworth Falls Community House back approximately 15 feet onto a foundation, which would provide better site distance for their mini-mart located in that vicinity." From the minutes from that meeting, quote, "Since this is a historical building, Lawrence King, chairman of the Historical Preservation Commission, has been contacted by Exxon officials with regard to moving the building. Mr. King has volunteered to handle the bidding process." As chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, it was then unanimously resolved to authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement with Exxon or Weber regarding the Ellsworth Falls Community House. The text of that agreement has not been uncovered. Again, the value of this historic building to the community of Ellsworth Falls was protected by our city council. This sets the stage for the city's request for proposals process dated 2005. The community house was put out to bid by the city of Ellsworth. In its RFP, the city council noted, quote, "The city of Ellsworth is seeking proposals from parties interested in the purchase of the following historic properties," end quote. In the description of the Ellsworth Falls building, the RFP stated, "This structure is not designated as a local historic landmark, but is considered to have significant local historic interest by the Ellsworth Historic Preservation Commission." In its selection criteria, the city wrote, "The city will accept the proposal that is considered to be in the best interest of the city." Proposal requirements stated, "The purchases must expressly indicate that they will meet or exceed all controls and conditions and objectives expressed in the RFP," and I am quoting from that. "The proposal shall include a statement showing the financial capability of the purchaser to complete the project as proposed." Further in the proposal, the city penned, "Any future change in use at any time will require the approval of the city council." In their successful one and one-half-page proposal dated April 1st, I don't think any pun intended, Weber offered the city $5,000 for the building and the land, an amount that is indeed curious, as the $5,000 was penned in over the original typed proposal. Although this was $15,000 less than the 1986 offer rejected by the city 20 years earlier, one can assume the council approved the proposal because Weber assured that they would, quote, "Immediately implement the correction of items mentioned in the City Law Consultants Report," a report which outlined the building's immediate and long-term needs. Weber's proposal assured the city, "The applicant is ready to fund the requirements outlined in the 2004 report. The financial strength of Weber Oil Company is well-known," they wrote. In addition, "The applicant has sufficient land to move the building onto an alternate site if so needed." And further in their proposal, Weber included, "We are not purchasing this property for any grand development scheme." The history of the city council shepherding of this building is quite clear. From its acquisition in 1888, to its refusal in '86 to allow Weber to demolish the building for their own betterment, to the sale of the building for $5,000 in 2005 with the understanding it would be taken care of, why else would an offer of $5,000 have been accepted? No wonder the inclusion of the fourth proposal requirements in the city's request. "Any future change in use at any time will require the approval of the city council." The city council acted in good faith for the citizens of Ellsworth. They, through public outcry, understood and understand the importance of this building to the history of the village of Ellsworth Falls. In requiring approval from the council for any change in use at any time, they assured the citizens that the sanctity of this building would be protected. Tonight, the board considers the city's options in conjunction with this property. Because on September 10th, 2018, an application for a permit to demolish the Ellsworth Falls Community Building was filed by a representative from Weber and approved by Dwight Tilton, Code Enforcement Officer for the city of Ellsworth. That permit should never have been approved. Not only should its approval have been denied because the paperwork was riddled with errors, but the issuance of this permit is contingent on the agreement of the city council, not on the Code Enforcement Office. The issuance of this permit is in direct conflict with that agreement between Weber and the city. Weber has not lived up to their agreement. They apparently were not prepared to address the correction of items, both long and short-term. They said the financial strength of Weber is well-known, but they have left this building uncared for. No grand development scheme? If this proposal was not intended for a grand development scheme, why would Weber Oil have purchased over time all of the adjoining property? Weber began soliciting for adjacent properties years before 2005. According to the Hancock County Registry of Deeds, there were properties purchased in 2003 from Oakfield Development, October of 2003 from Collins, who had curiously enough just brought the property a month earlier from the city, and from an estate in 2004. Then Weber joined all of these properties into one. Why, anyone who was living in Ellsworth Falls during that time would tell you about the grand scheme, the super truck stop. Now the sign on the property from last spring until last week read, "For lease, will build to suit." And as of Wednesday, "For sale, development opportunity." Not a grand development scheme? Either the city of Ellsworth was complicit, or boy, was the wool pulled over our eyes. I was informed by a Weber representative in February of '18 of their intent to demolish this building. I immediately took RFP paperwork to the Code Office, the Planning Office, and Council. I met with members of the Historic Commission, who did not have any knowledge of the RFP or proposal. One member of that group stated, "I always wondered about that building." All groups were given copies of the RFP, letters from the Historic Commission that indicated historic significance, though not on the registry. Told by a city official that the only recourse would be to wait for Weber to obtain a demolition permit and then to file an appeal, I waited. In the meantime, public sentiment increased. At this time, over 450 residents and taxpayers signed an online petition to block the demolition. Scores more have signed paper petitions. We waited, we were told, as we were told to do, from February to September when the application was issued and filed an appeal. The appeals hearing was scheduled and held on October 22nd. The information given to us was misinformation. The Board of Appeals was not the proper venue. I was misled, and as a result, I simply waited from February to September for the permit to be issued. Now, unsure of the building's safety in the hands of the city, misguided by city officials and boards, a formal request for determination of eligibility for the National Historic Register was filed pre- Register was filed previously with the Maine Historic Commission, and the commission has not yet replied. If the Taconic is declared eligible, rehab of the building would qualify for Maine State and federal historic rehab tax credits, which together amount to about 45% of the cost of rehab, a significant financial incentive if the building is used for an income-producing.
Excuse me, Judy? I've been very lenient, because I knew that you would have a long opening, but if you could begin your summation on this-
Sure, I'm there. I'm totally there. Once rehabilitated, the Taconic could generate economic benefits and would enhance the value of the property while improving the atmosphere and appearance of Ellsworth Falls Village. If the building is demolished, the city will forego all of these benefits. To further our efforts, if our application is not successful, we have begun the process of becoming a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to undertake the process of rehabbing this building. The village of Ellsworth Falls, an historic part of the development of Ellsworth, is facing extinction. A once bustling village with stave mills, shingle mills, blacksmith shops, a general store, a post office, and its own zip code, 04633, risks being forgotten. We charged the city council to do the right but difficult thing, rescind the permit. It was never the call of the code office to allow it. Not only does it violate the city's Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 56, Article 2, Section 208.1, and Chapter 39, Article 1 and 11, 13, but Weber's action to request demolition is in breach of the implied contact, contract, pardon me, with the city and its citizens. And the city, a trustee of the Public Health and Welfare, is obligated to revoke the demolition permit in order to maintain public trust. Hold Weber responsible for their agreement, or put the building into the hands of some group prepared to take care of it. Step up to your responsibility. Deny the demolition. The future of this historic building lies in your hands. Lastly, investigate the error-riddled demolition application process. Let no one else have to endure the misguidance. I thank you.
Thank you.
I want to counter, oh, Rebecca Maddox-Wolvere, lifetime resident of Ellsworth Falls, Maine, 04633. I was just sitting back, thinking about history and looking at the group of people. I graduated from high school with Gary's sister. Your grandfather was my mailman and my blacksmith. In 1963, when I was two years old, I rode around the city of Ellsworth in the Ellsworth Bicentennial in a carriage belonging to Edgar Phillips. I used to babysit for your husband. You're my schoolteacher. I don't know if you're related to Midi and Ida Hamilton, but if so, we would have a connection there, otherwise, I don't know about you, Dale. And your ex-sister-in-law was my 4-H leader. So that's history. That's important. And none of you or anybody else can remove my connection to the individual histories that I have with you as human beings, or maybe you didn't even know about that. But you certainly can remove my connection to the Taconic building that my grandfather, who was born in 1872, was a fireman. My grandfather, born 1872, isn't that crazy? Well, my father worked in. I was a volunteer 15 years for the Ellsworth Falls Thrift Shop, and the church was evicted. They did not stop. They were evicted. I was a volunteer the entire time that the church ran the thrift shop, and I can tell you, when the building was moved, the bathroom used to be in the back. They tore that piece off, and they built a bathroom, and they replaced some broken stairs. There were not substantial repairs as promised or described. And there is, in fact, a written agreement that was not negotiated down to nothingness because I sat here for every single public meeting, except for the times that I was chasing my small children around the building, because, of course, it's not an easy place to contain people. But I did not miss the important details that were discussed about the preservation of the building. The agreement was to restore, and if necessary, relocate the building should they have any need to in the future. Neither of which of these options have been utilized, obviously. So the third thing that wasn't in their agreement, but I would ask you to contemplate, is Weber relinquishing the building, because they, in fact, have breached their own agreement. And just because it is not in the deed does not mean that it is not a legally arguable agreement. It is a written agreement to do things they have not done. They have sought a demolition permit, which is obviously an absolute contrast to their promise. They have received one. I understand that this is an uncomfortable thing for people, to think that you have some actual responsibility for this, but you do, because a group of people representing the citizens of Ellsworth negotiated and agreed to this with Weber, and they are not holding up their end of the deal. The beautiful part for them is, for some mysterious reason, it was decided not to put covenants in the deed. Was it trust, or was it maligned? I don't really know. But the point is, there is a written, signed, dated agreement that we have circulated to many, many people, and that, honestly, is all the city of Ellsworth needs to protect that property and the agreement that was made. So I would ask you to very seriously consider this not as a sentimental, foolish, you know, meanderings of historical, you know, lovers of yesteryear. That's not what this is. $5,000 for a historical property on Route 1A is a farce. If it was believed that they were going to do anything, except what they said they would do, what they signed an agreement to do, why, as Judy Blood had said, would the city have sold a building, a historical building, for $5,000? You can't get a good-use car for $5,000. It makes absolutely no sense. So I ask you to please overcome all urges to believe that this was an honest endeavor that Weber simply can't hold up at this point, because that is not the case. It's also important to note that they have been reached out to many, many, many times by phone and by email, and will not communicate, and there's good reason for that, because there's not an honest word that can be said. And when you can't honestly deal with something, it is best to remain silent. So we, citizens, the 500 strong or more at this point, are asking you to think very, very carefully about your duties as council members these years forward, because those agreements were made by the Ellsworth City Council members for all of time. At any time there was to be a change in use, it was supposed to be brought before the city council. You are now the city council. Whether you're comfortable or uncomfortable, feeling informed or uninformed, the fact of the matter is that is in a legal agreement. And I ask you to look not just into what has been said to you about this or what hasn't been said, but to look into your hearts about, seriously, what community is and what you're entrusted to do. Because this lesson has taught me, if nothing else, that unless I am sitting in the midst of it and a part of it, I can't rely on it. This does not make me feel very good to have been here since 1986. 1986, 1989, 2004, 2005, and here again, all over the same thing. I go out and vote, and I voted for people sitting around this table. I am not sitting on this table. I elected you to sit at this table and to be a steward for what matters in this community. And if we can't rely on the city council to represent our wishes, then what is the point of having a council? I know some of you have reached out, and some of you have expressed an interest and a commitment to this process, but it needs to go forward and confront the situation with Weber. There is no way to passively hold them accountable. Action needs to be taken. Yes, we can take legal action, but the fact of the matter, this agreement was with the city of Ellsworth, and we're asking you, the city of Ellsworth, to take that action. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, please? Now would be your time. Counselors, comments or questions? Counselor Hamilton.
So first, I want to start by saying to Judy and Rebecca, you have represented this process very well in terms of your tenacity, leadership, and bringing the community together around this issue. And I think that's important on any issue, is that you have to have champions behind issues to bring it forward. I think a venue like this is appropriate to talk about it and try to sort through it. And, you know, from my perspective, it's always best to try to arrive at a situation that is a win-win for all parties. That isn't always possible. I would hope that that would be the case here. I think it's challenging. I think there's some questions. Part of what I'm looking at, and I have some questions to understand the legal aspects in terms of my role as a council, what legally can we do? What can't we do? What's within our control? What's not in our control? I do think that there's an issue about, in terms of the cost of taking over the building, what would that mean to taxpayers? Where would that come from? So I think there's a question there. I do think there are legitimate points you're raising about the intent and where it's gone, and, but, you know, 13 years later, it's always hard to look back, and I can't do that. So where I sit today is trying to understand, you've done a great job in terms of giving that historical perspective from your viewpoint, where that's been, and what I need to hear some more tonight is some more information about just the legalities of it to be able to make an informed decision. I do have one question, just in terms of, I did hear you say that there was perhaps some interest in forming a 501(c)(3) to perhaps have a private entity take over the building, and that's certainly what Council Forty was suggesting, and so that may be the opportunity here to look for a win-win if we could find some way to make that happen with Weber. So I'll just put that there as a potential opportunity as we go through this discussion.
Did you want comment on that about the group?
If you have a response to anything I said, absolutely.
Sure, yeah, the process for 501(c)(3) has begun.
Judy?
Thank you.
As I mentioned, the process for 501(c)(3) has begun, because in the event that the application for consideration for a National Historic Registry status is denied, and I don't know that yet, then we are prepared to take that on as a nonprofit, in a similar way to what's happening in Surrey right now with the Surrey Schoolhouse. Surrey Schoolhouse is owned by the town of Surrey, but the rehab project is taken on entirely by the nonprofit organization.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Counselor.
I'm wondering if you have any sense of the willingness of people around the city and the county to chip in and put money toward the resurrection and the reconstruction, whatever's necessary of that building?
Thank you. The 500 strong members, many of them are city, pardon me, are summer residents that have means and have been already offering to make donations, but at this point, I don't own the building, and the city doesn't own the building, and so it's really difficult to accept financial donations for something that you do not own. So, yes, there certainly are a number of people, individuals and groups, that would be willing to contribute to a nonprofit.
That kind of presents a little bit of a problem, in the sense that I can see where your people would say, "We can't give money," but it might be a difficult thing on the other end of it, by moving along toward what you want, if we don't know whether or not there's going to be enough money to maintain that building.
Certainly, it's interesting that you raised that issue, because the same issue came up in Surrey. The citizens of Surrey were worried that it would become a burden for the town if they agreed to not demolish the building, because the city of Surrey was actually looking at demolishing the schoolhouse. Grassroots effort came forth and started raising funds. It was different, though. It was different because the city owned the building. At this point, the city doesn't own the building, the Bloods don't own the building, and the Save the Ellsworth Firehouse doesn't own the building. Weber owns the building, and Weber has remained mute. It presently is, as of last Wednesday, and I have to believe that this was strategic, the "for lease" sign changed into a "for sale" sign. I've contacted the realty organization out of Portland that's handling it, and I had a call back. I haven't, I've been out of town until last night, and I haven't returned their call. So I don't know what they're asking for the property. I don't know if they would consider chipping off the piece that the Taconic is on, and, you know, with a little bit more. I don't know anything about that yet. But I have been busy in doing my research and getting the organization going.
Any other comments or questions of counsel? Counselor?
I would like to hear from our attorney some questions just around the legalities, options available.
Good evening. My name is John Hammer from Rodman Wychell, and I need to first put out there that our office does some work with Weber in other areas. So if there's any interest in bringing suit against Weber, we would have to call an outside counsel to assist you with that, just because we have a conflict of interest there. If you have questions about the Board of Appeals process, or any interest in negotiation of purchasing the building, we can certainly help you with that, but I have a limited ability to advise you at this point.
I would consider that a conflict of interest. I would state that I have been told that that was true and that there was an inherent conflict of interest, but it has not been confirmed, so I would agree.
So, and we're happy to make the referral to get someone in here who can advise you to the legalities of a suit against Weber, if that's what you'd like to do.
Counselor?
So in terms of, just a specific question, you can let me know if that falls into that. I don't know if, I'm curious what the, as far as an RFP, the legal standing of an RFP, are you able to comment on that?
In general terms, really, it depends on the topic that you're dealing with. In terms of real estate, if you have an RFP for property and the terms of the RFP aren't included as a condition to the deed, then generally, it's not going to carry through. Those criteria are often conditions before the property is transferred, and if they're satisfied, then the property is transferred, and if they're not satisfied, they'd have to be a condition of the transfer, such as with a covenant in the deed. So if there's no covenant in the deed, then generally, it's going to be difficult to enforce a RFP after the fact. Now, that doesn't mean that there might be some, not be some other documents out there separate from the RFP that may have some legal effect.
Excuse me, I was informed through counsel that actually there could be something done with that, that this constitutes an agreement, and that there could be actually a suit filed to renegotiate the agreement between Weber and the city.
Information that was given us from Ed Behr, the city's attorney, as far as the RFP...
I have to object. I'm finding this to be a conflict of interest. We're talking about Ed, who is associated with the same firm that negotiated this.
Excuse me, Judy, please. It reads, "The absence of any such restrictive language in the deed is fatal to this hypothetical breach of contract claim. Under Maine law, the doctrine of merger provides that once a deed is accepted, it becomes the final statement of the agreement between the parties and nullifies all provisions of the purchase and sale agreement that preceded it." He goes on to say, "There is no reason to doubt that this principle..."
He goes on to say, "There is no reason to doubt that this principle would apply equally to the RFP, Weber's proposal, and the city council's acceptance of that proposal. I found no case law in Maine or other states that suggests a legal distinction between an RFP and a purchase and sale contract in this context." I'm just putting that information out there.
I still maintain that I feel this is a conflict of interest, and this discussion with the law firm needs to stop, and legal assistance needs to be gained as far as someone who's not partial.
Thank you. You've stated your case, your point, I mean. Counselor.
Can you tell me, what was the Board of Appeals, where does that stand? Am I understood correctly that, at this point, that it is a six-month hold on the demolition? Is that accurate?
Yeah. It's been put on hold, and I believe the period is six months. The code enforcement officer is here tonight, Dwight Tilton, who could speak to this.
Dwight, if you could go to the podium, please.
Dwight?
Well, he's going up there, Mr. Chairman. I'd suggest, in all the information we have in front of us, that we're not sure that the Board of Appeals has any right to be in this conversation. So I think that's number one that we need to get through, is, is that the proper board to hear this? And then you go into this. So I, I'm just amazed that we've gotten this far with a blatant conflict of interest, and it hasn't been cut off six months ago, when we knew this was coming. I just, I'm amazed.
Yes. Dwight Tilton. I'm not aware of there actually being a timeframe. I know that Weber had agreed to wait until it was resolved. I don't know if they were waiting for tonight, or whether it would be issue, if the council remands it back to the Board of Appeal to that date. They've cooperated so far. I don't anticipate they would have an issue if it dragged on a couple of more months.
So...
Sure. Go ahead.
The, at this point, then, you're saying that the decision to not move forward with the permit is Weber's decision, that there hasn't been any stay on that?
We have nothing in writing, though. I have it. Now, Ed Behr had negotiated them on it being held off. I don't know what that timeframe is.
That sounds, again, like a conflict. Ed Behr negotiated with Weber of holding off on the demolition permits?
Judy, Judy, you can't do that from the audience. You've got to come to the podium, because people can't hear you. So you're going to have to speak in turn, please.
I am terribly sorry, but if that does not smack of conflict of interest, that Ed Behr was going to talk with Weber about not moving forward on a demolition permit that was under discussion at the appeals hearing, you, Mark was at the appeals hearing, but the rest of you were not. I just feel as though that was totally inappropriate, and I suspected that there was a conflict of interest from the very get-go, and now it has been confirmed.
Counselor Fordy.
Judy, I'll tell you, I watched the entire thing on our live access, and I'm glad I did, because if I'd been down here, I'd been on the table yelling. That was the most embarrassing I've been to be a city councillor. The actions of that committee that evening were horrible. They never took the information and counsel of our attorney. They went off on streaks that should never have been there. So I watched the whole thing, and I've watched it three times, and I apologize for how you got treated.
The only reason that I was not unnerved by that counsel was because I took the time to watch yet another video on the city's website. So I was prepared for the dog and pony show that was going to proceed.
I get a question.
Counselor Moore.
If we wanted to create, let's say, a moratorium, six months, do we have that authority?
I'm not sure a moratorium.
Well, I mean, it was an understanding that, maybe true or false, that there was a six-month period of time, which turns out now perhaps not to have existed in the first place. Can we create a period of time where further work can be done, perhaps reaching some kind of an agreement with Weber, or whatever?
Counselor Hamilton.
Counselor.
Well, to that point, I want to put on the table a motion at this point, to stay the permit request of the demolition of the Taconic property pending the opportunity for this counsel to have consultation with attorneys, so we can discuss the matter in terms of legal options, and that we appropriately vet it until such time that that stay would exist.
You said it much nicer than I did.
For discussion, I'd second that.
Motion and a second. Further discussion, please. Counselor.
I think the most important thing here, and I've known this young lady for decades, and I still consider her my friend. I'm talking about taxpayer money not being spent on this. If they can get a grassroots organization, I'll be one of the ones in line to help you. But as a taxpayer, I can't ask them to pay for this when we're not paving roads, we're not taking care of sidewalks, we're not giving our employees the raise they deserve. So what I would love to see is us to get an outside attorney and really go through this fine-tooth comb and find out what's going on. I will say that, conflict or not, it appears that the relationship has benefited this demolition stay. They've been able to talk, my understanding is talk to Weber, and, okay, just, you know, slow down a little bit, to the benefit of not tearing down this building. If this had been somebody else, I'd suggest it probably been in a dumpster in a landfill up north of Old Town. But because of the relationship, it's benefited. But I think it's time now to break away from that and get independent counsel and go at it that way. So I would support the stay, and I would support, I would not send it back to the appeals board at this time.
Just so that this is public record, it was advised to me at the hearing, at the appeals hearing, that it was not the proper venue, and that I better get legal counsel. I had to go as far as Camden to find someone who would touch this, because of the city of Ellsworth and Weber Oil. Any attorney that I contacted in this city, within the city limits, in fact, one of the firms couldn't get me off the phone fast enough. So I wish you well in finding counsel who is not associated with Weber.
One of my questions that I have, did the Board of Appeals, did they have the right to remand it back to counsel? Were they, by doing that, were they creating policy? Or were they following the ordinance?
Me of you.
I mean, in deference to legal counsel, what I read, what I listened to on that, is the appeals board never had a finding of fact that it was something that they had the authority to deal with. Jeff Toothaker, in his opening statement, clearly said that, that he didn't think this had anything to do with the appeals board, and we shouldn't even be doing it. Let's send it back to the council. They made this problem.
That's how he ordered it.
Yep. So that answers never, the question's never been answered. Who has authority on this?
Excuse me.
I would like to go on record as saying that I was advised, that that was my only avenue. I was advised in February that my only avenue was to wait for the permit to be issued, and then to file an appeal. I did what I was told.
I would like to go on record, excuse me, regarding the city's counsel's statement to me, which is on the video. And contrary to what you just read, his opinion, after he went back and consulted with, remember he consulted with, was that this had, there was no way to legally fight this. He sat here and told me, "I am not saying that you can't. I'm simply saying it is a tough row to hoe." So I don't want people sitting here to think that that, in fact, was the only position he put forth, because at the night that he sat here at the appeals meeting, he told me that it wasn't that it couldn't be fought, it was a tough row to hoe, quite different than what he told you in the writing you read to us a few minutes ago. Again, conflict of interest. What are we to trust when they're working for the same company?
I think one of the reasons why we're considering having the time period set aside is to erase any question of conflict of interest. I think, and I hope you understand, that's what we hope to achieve.
I absolutely do. I'm simply very, very angry, because I was told that this relationship existed a long time ago, and in my view, an act of integrity would have been to own that right away, not to collude.
John.
If I may, I don't know exactly a lot of the history behind this, but I can tell you that, in terms of our firm representing the city before the Board of Appeals, or representing the Board of Appeals, that would not be a conflict of interest at that point, because that's a review of a permit that was issued, and there's no direct conflict there. Certainly, if there's any interest the city has in taking action against Weber, that is definitely a conflict of interest, and we'd have to get you separate counsel. But going through the Board of Appeals procedure, I don't think that there was any conflict there. And I do agree with whatever prior assessment there was, that if a permit has been issued, the proper method to challenge that is to take it to the Board of Appeals. And the Board of Appeals is supposed to review that permit for whatever criteria exists under the ordinance. And the Board of Appeals does not have the authority to remand something to the city council. I can tell you that as a matter of structure of the city. So that was not something that they had within their authority to do. What you do with that is up to you. If you want to send it back to them and have them continue with their review and make a decision, that can then be appealed to Superior Court. That's up to you. That's certainly one thing you could do. But that's separate from the issue of whether there's a claim against Weber.
Am I correct in thinking that the duty of the Board of Appeals is to make sure that the ordinance was applied properly, and that's their only duty?
That's correct.
So, okay. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. We have a motion and a second that we do need to carry forward, and having back-and-forth discussions at this point isn't moving that issue.
I thought he had closed public comment, and asked us to act.
Yep, I did. I asked if there was any further question or comment.
One other comment that I'll make. Judy, I forget whether it was you or Rebecca, if it was you, you called us stewards in this community. And I agree with you, but as stewards in this community, we have to work within the law. I can't, or we can't go outside of that box, as difficult it is sometimes. And when I'm being advised that the purchase and sale agreement is the final say in the sale, and they found no other case law in Maine or any other state where the RFP should be included in consideration in an issue such as this, and it was not in the sale agreement.
The night of the Board of Appeals, he wasn't speaking of the RFP. What I had asked of him, when they were debating whether or not to continue it, I said, "If we allow that to happen," because if they had not rescinded the permit, we could sue. We could have filed suit. So I asked the attorney, "If we go along with putting this off and turn it back to the council," which we believed it was supposed to go to begin with, but we were told otherwise, "Will that make it so that suit could not be filed?" And he said, the city attorney said, that you certainly could, that that wouldn't change anything, and that it would be a tough row to hoe to win that suit, but he said that you could. It simply would be a tough, he was speaking of a lawsuit. We weren't talking about Board of Appeals. I was talking about filing suit, and he said it would be a tough row to hoe. You can watch the video. So that was the context. It was not what this gentleman was speaking about at all. And the Board of Appeals could find no ordinance that spoke to this at all. So it isn't about, you know, it being, you know, a fine-tuned machine. In fact, the ordinances have huge gaps, and there was nothing that specifically applied to this, except that the building permit was not filled out in completion. It said there were zero stories, and Weber was charged far less than what they should have been, because it said it was zero stories, and they paid maybe a quarter of the price they should have paid for the actual square foot, feet. So the permit wasn't filled out correctly, but as far as ordinances, there was nothing that covered it.
But I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Maybe I misspoke. I wasn't talking about the permit. I'm talking about the deed.
Yep. And he sat there and said, "It's not impossible to do that. It's a tough row to hoe."
Sure. You, in my mind, anybody can file suit for anything, you know? Someone could file suit against me for having a bad hairstyle.
Correct, but he said, "I'm not saying that it can't be done, that you can't win the suit." That's what he said. Watch the video. That's what he was speaking of.
Trust me, I have, I know it almost verbatim by now.
Mr. Chairman?
So, yes, sir.
We're sitting here debating this, after Mr. Hamer brings up the possibility of a conflict of interest, whether a different attorney's opinions will read the same as what we're looking at. But this board now is looking and using documents were provided by our law firm that now, thanks to a member of that law firm, throws a cloud over it. Then that makes this information in front of us virtually useless. So any further debate and back and forth, I think we're gaining nothing, because we're working on information that we do not have, that we can feel is accurate in the public specter. It's been jaded. It's not good. I think Mr. Hamilton's motion to move on and try to get a different opinion is probably the best way to go, and probably we should move ahead with that instead of competing the debate going on.
I think the first thing that we need to do is to figure out if we can stay this. Now, it's an agreement that Weber said they will wait until, what, six months? But it's going to be nothing in writing. And I don't know that we, at this point where it's been issued, if we actually can put a hold on the demolition, or if this is out of courtesy that they're doing it.
Whether you can or not, I have an appeal right here in my hands.
They're doing it out of courtesy.
That is right. And I would well imagine that they would be willing to, rather than have more aggravation than they want, they could stay that for a bit, at least to let us get a second opinion on this and see what we can legally do with someone that isn't involved with Weber and the city of Ellsworth.
Counselor.
So I would just say that, I agree. Whether we can or not, I don't know, but I think taking the action at least, they will have to challenge it and buy some time. Hopefully, it can be done amicably, so we can have the time. But in either case, we get some time to move this forward. But again, as I said before, I think the goal is trying to find a resolution where all parties can win. I think Weber, in all honesty, have, they've been open at least to letting the process play out, and hopefully it'll give us the time to do that. So I agree with what you're saying, and I just think that's a little more assurance.
Counselor Fordy.
At the risk of making problems here, I would ask indulgence if we could ask Mr. Hamer if the verbiage of Counselor Hamilton's motion meets the requirements. I don't care who it's against, but... I don't care who it's against, but normally in stuff like this, they'd like findings of fact and then a decision. Does the motion meet the requirements to protect ourselves if it goes to the next step in court? Have we done our findings of fact and our motion and dispense of the motion? Generally, not in this particular.
In this case, you're not making a decision on a permit, so you're not required to make findings and decisions. So, it's perfectly appropriate for the council to move to get new counsel and to reevaluate the situation. And that's a perfectly appropriate and wise thing to do.
Because I heard stay of the permit in his motion, so that's what brought my question up.
I'm not sure that the council has the authority to stay anything.
Had to ask a question. Thank you.
So, the best you can do is what you've done.
So, could I recommend a friendly amendment to Dale's proposal and say that what we plan to do is table this until we can find no? Why is that no?
Okay. Motion's not on the table.
What's that? I'm making a friendly amendment to his motion.
You're changing the, there's a difference between his motion and tabling it.
Well, I guess, he, his motion was to stay the permit. And if that's not possible legally for us to do, then I'm recommending we change it to say that we give ourselves time to get other counsel and get other, to seek other counsel so that we can pursue this properly. So, instead of saying tabling it, that's kind of the same thing. We need to get some time, so we need to step away from this to get that time and just then to get other advice from other counsel. But we don't think we legally can stay the demolition.
You can file an injunction.
So, you.
I know. I've had legal assistance that's not involved with Weber.
All right, shut her down.
First of all, what, you're the one that made the motion, Counselor?
You know, I'm.
The city has the authority to file an injunction.
Judy, please.
I'm just letting you know.
I'm happy with the amendment in terms of if the stay has no basis, then changing the language is just right.
It seems to me that we'd have the time to talk with attorneys who could then instruct us as to what we need to do. Let's vote.
So, you're willing to withdraw your motion, Counselor? Is that correct?
Well, he's accepted the change to the motion.
He's accepting the friendly amendment.
Anybody know what the wording is?
I think he's placed it in an awkward position where you don't have legal counsel that is in a conflict to confirm it.
Please, excuse me. I'd be more comfortable if you withdrew your motion and then Counselor Hudson can give hers.
I will throw my motion.
Thank you. Counselor Hudson, your motion, please.
I move that we readdress this at a time to give us time to seek additional legal counsel and come back to this in a more prepared and informed way.
You want to table item 17. Is that correct?
Yes, for those reasons.
I guess technically if you go to MMA training school, it's really to delay action on, table is meant when you put it on the table for the evening and bring it off the table and act on it. So, technically it's to delay action on this to give our staff enough time to retain the services of an independent counsel and advise us on this in an appropriate way.
Mr. Cole.
Just a point of clarification. I believe it would be the position of legal counsel that their petition, excuse me, participation up to this point has not constituted a conflict. If you go to litigation, they can't be involved with the two clients.
Right.
Certainly appropriate at this point. And we've had to do this before where Redmond and Winchell has referred us in one case to a Portland attorney on an assessment case to the Board of Appeals, and we brought it outside counsel. I think we're at that point. But again, this is anticipating you're going to do litigation. Correct. And we could bring in an attorney to advise you on what your options are.
Thank you.
I'd like to just make a point if I may.
The motion to delay item 17 has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion?
No discussion on the table.
I'm sorry?
No further discussion when you table a motion.
It's not to table.
This isn't a table. Is, is.
Wasn't a table.
It was a, it was a.
To delay.
Delay action.
Delay action.
Counselor?
So, I would just propose one addition, friendly amendment, if you would. The concern I have is I would like to have something that states that we would seek cooperation from Weber to continue to delay the demolition pending our ability to consult and that we get that from, that commitment from them. Otherwise, we have, that's the missing piece for me.
It is a missing piece because they hold a demolition permit.
So, if we could add that, we would seek that cooperation.
Is that something they're willing to add?
I will accept it. Counselor Hamilton's friendly amendment.
Thank you. Further discussion, comments?
I would just like to go on record.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
I think one of the first things we're going to do is an injunction.
I beg your pardon?
Item 18, Council Order Number 111811, Discussion on Budgeting Planning Sponsored by Counselor Hamilton. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I bring this agenda item to the council tonight as a way to get out in front of our budgeting process. I feel that we really, the city of Ellsworth is growing. There are many competing demands. We heard some of them tonight, that the compactors from 1990, that our equipment in Public Works is aged, 18-year-old vehicles, 12-year-old vehicles. And we run into priorities. We were discussing the issue coming up on EMS services. That doesn't come without a cost. We've heard from departments, Chief Tupper's talked about the need for additional firefighters. There's a lot happening in this city, a lot of great things, a lot of development. But with development also comes the need for the city to be able to carry out the services and meet the needs of citizens, whether it's for safety, development, ensuring good roads, all of the things that the city does. And what I think we run into is the fact that we have these competing demands, we have these pressures for the dollars we have, and then we end up in situations of having to solve acute issues because something comes up and then we divert financial resources. And we look at things, quite honestly, in isolation, that we look at things in silos. Requests come forward in this silo saying, we have this need, we have it now, we need to spend money. And then another competing demand comes up, we have this need, we need to spend money. And then there's a disconnect. There's a disconnect in terms of where do we go with it as council, as the city. There's a competing demands in terms of the community and residents wondering, what are we doing? Where are we going? And being able to weigh in on all of those things. So, I believe that one of the ways to get out in front of that, that would be very beneficial for us, is to approach this a little bit differently. Approach it from first, building it from the ground up, understanding what it is that we have in the city. What are the positions that we have in each area, each department, each service? What are the needs that we identify currently for each service, each department area in terms of capital items? Where do we need to make investments? So that we can then take all of that information and start prioritizing, start planning, start budgeting. Otherwise, we are going to be faced in a situation that one of these years, we're going to face extreme costs. And the way that cities address increased costs is to increase taxes. That's the only way that you do it. There's no magic there. If there's a need, you've got revenue coming in and that's in the form of taxes, and you have expenses going out. And we have to balance that. And I feel like we will continually run into these challenges if we don't take another approach. So, what I would like to propose is that we form an ad hoc committee, that we involve a citizen representative, and we go through a process now, leading up to the budgeting, where we look at those items, where we develop a capital plan. And then by the time we get to the point of actually putting a budget together, we'll talk about priorities. We'll talk about resources. We'll talk about what it is that we need as a city going forward. And we'll look at it beyond just the next year. We'll look at it year two, year three, year four, and we'll start putting some things together that the community is invested in, bought in, and understands. And then it might move us quicker to some of these goals. Where are we going to house our public service structure? That's a big issue. What are we going to do with EMS? All of those things, we will not have answers. Things will keep, we'll keep kicking the can down the road because we don't have an overall plan around that. So, that's my proposal and I wanted to bring it here tonight to discuss, to see if there's some way that we can develop some sort of process like that. Thank you.
Counselors' comments or questions?
I think it's fabulous. I think we've talked about this for a few weeks now in our meetings and beyond the two, three, and four-year plan, I'd like to see a, well, short term, of course, but a five and 10-year plan, because I think that's the only way that we're going to be able to look at capital improvement with the price tags that we're talking about for the equipment that we're talking about. Accidents are going to happen and more or less wear and tear on our vehicles is something you can always predict. But with the experience that we have with quite a bit of accuracy, you can ballpark when this stuff is going to need to happen. And we got to work on having the funds to handle the stuff you can't not attend to. And that's what's happened, I think, over time, is that, you know, you have a fairly fixed budget and then you have to address an emergency. And that's when you lose money for roads and you lose money for new trucks and you lose money for something else because there's no way to not deal with that. So, we're going to have to figure out what the contingency plan is, what the, where that funding is going to come from to address those issues when they happen, to prevent it from happening, to prevent it from taking away from our capital improvement plan.
What Counselor Hamilton has proposed is long overdue. But there's another ingredient in there that Counselor Beetham used to talk about, and that is commitment. It's one thing to do this, then you've got to be committed to it. And I think, as I said, I think it's long overdue and I think the citizens of Ellsworth deserve having a council that's willing to take this step forward.
I've never been afraid of trying new things and I applaud you for bringing that forward. I would suggest that this isn't something new. Every department head has their capital ideas, their long-range plan. It comes to our management team, Finance Director and Deputy City Manager, manager work on that. They see all that information. We have a very robust capital improvement plan that we keep plugging things in as we go. Over the years, we've increased our fund balance up to between 15 and 20 percent to take care of those issues that are sudden and severe. It just hasn't been called what you're calling it. And there hasn't been a lot of council public input. It's been more on the staff level. So, I don't see a problem with bringing more on board, but it isn't that our staff has not been doing this. It's been done as staff members in preparation for the budget that the city manager at the end presents to us as his recommendation. They've already taken in the bigger picture and they've made the decision on what to present to us as their best positive budget. And by the way, here are the things we cut out. So, I hope staff doesn't take any negative to this because I think it's all positive as long as we know they've already been doing this.
One of the areas that would, it's still going to be a moving target, no matter what we do, is developing technology. We don't know what's coming down the road, whether it's computers, software, hardware, new equipment for police, fire. 20 years ago, I'm guessing that probably tasers, for instance, had never been heard of. And then all of a sudden, they, tasers came out and the city bought some. But that could not have been seen in a, in a long term. So, I applaud what you're doing, your initiative on this, but we're still going to have to realize that there will be things that come up that just aren't around today.
And that can be planned into the, into a budgeting process, though, when tasers are all of a sudden invented, then we plan when we're going to get them. But there are some things like trucks where you can, but you're going to have to have a snow truck.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we know it's going to snow.
This isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow. It's going to take a while to become organized, as in to consider what Counselor Fortier said. I think we know that the staff does a tremendous job putting it together. We need to kind of mesh it together and look at it periodically, find out how things are working. And at some point down the road, hopefully sooner rather than later, we'll see the benefit of what we're doing. Have a better grip on it.
I would certainly wholeheartedly agree on setting up an ad hoc committee with a citizen rep. Any other comments, questions?
May I?
Certainly.
Just Counselor Fortier brought up the staff involvement. I can tell you, we welcome this conversation. Whoever said earlier that Citizen Beetham, when he was, when he was Counselor Beetham, said it only will work if you have predictable funding to back it up. And as Counselor Hamilton noted, we get a need from here, we get a need from there, but some of that's finger in the dyke stuff, you know, things breaking and stuff. So, the only way to deal with that is a predictable, long-term plan that deals with things orderly and systematically and properly funded. And you have to have commitment on all parts or it won't work.
Just a final comment. And I mean no disrespect to the city staff in terms of the work that's done. My main point is the prioritization and its priorities of the community of where, what are we looking at and how are we going to get there? And some of the things that we're talking about, there's not just one way of doing something outside the context of really looking at it from a financial, the financial impact. We're just going down a road in terms of trying to do something and we may not do something because the way we've identified it is too expensive, but we identify it as a need. So, I think it's an opportunity to do that prioritization as a community. And so, it's not, it's not about not doing what you're already doing. It's about enhancing that and bringing some involvement beyond that.
Anything further?
Just a quick one. And we can start by doing that, by this council giving this man goals. This is what we'd like to see happen in Ellsworth in the next five years. I don't remember doing that. We've had general conversations, but I don't remember looking at Manager Cole. It's awful hard to evaluate him against nothing. So, that would help us there, too. We need to set some goals that we want to see achieved, and this is one of them, the financial picture, so that we can evaluate his meeting our goals in the future.
Item 19, Council Order Number 111812, Request of the Information Technology Administrator to Sell Surplus Property Servers.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded.
We're just going to let you have your way.
You're saying ass leave the room. Thou stinks.
Wait, you want to make sure that you-
I felt his submission was succinct, very understandable to the layman, and the surplus property seller.
It was short, sweet, to the point.
Yep, absolutely.
Motion and a second. Comments or questions? Are those in favor? Unanimous.
Did he wait for the results?
He did.
Item 20, Council Order Number 111813, request of the Finance Director to withdraw $2,400 from the police forfeiture account to go towards the purchase of the Power DMS software system, 20 tourniquets and holders. Chief.
Since it's my request, I'll, even though it was put forth by the Finance Director. Yeah, basically, this is money that has been seized through drug forfeiture, and the money is earmarked specifically and can actually only be used for equipment for the police department, and that's a matter of law. And so we're asking that these funds be put into an account. One account is being coupled with funds that we got through a $2,000 Walmart grant for the purchase of Power DMS. Power DMS is a computer program that will help us better manage our policies and procedures and our training records, among a whole host of other things that we can do with this computer program. The Power DMS will also help us to facilitate our goal of getting accredited with the Main Chiefs of Police Association in the next coming year to two, and that's going to be a major contributor to that process. And then a separate fund, so the total for that is, I think, $3,200 for that software. And then the other funding is about $1,200 that will be put into a separate account so that we can purchase tourniquets and hard holders for the officers to carry on their gun belts. We currently do have tourniquets, which officers have, in a much larger package that also contains some other first aid equipment, and those are most cases either in their patrol bags or applied to our tactical vests. So this will be a tourniquet that they can carry on their person in the event that they need to use that item either for their own self-preservation or to save someone else's life. That's it.
Comments or questions of the council? Counselor Fortier.
I applaud you for doing the tourniquets. Anybody that has not looked at this program, toggle on to Stop the Bleed. It's a nationwide program. I think it came out of the military for rapid intervention on trauma, where they teach you how to stop the bleeding to save a life. It's an incredible opportunity. If the public gets on and looks at it, we'll all be safer.
And I have to admit, when I read this, I mean, I'm 100% behind it. In my mind, it was, you know, to help people in an emergency, but when you just mentioned for their own self-preservation at times if necessary, I had never considered that, to be putting a tourniquet on themselves.
We train with it, and that's a major component of-
It's a good, very good point.
Hope we never have to, but.
Yeah. Goes without saying.
Same motion?
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I have had a-
Mr. Chairman, the motion requests the Finance Director to withdraw $2,400 from the police forfeiture account to go towards the purchase of the Power DMS software system, 20 tourniquets and holders. Second. Motion and a second. Further comments or questions? Are those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Chief.
Item 21, Council Order Number 111814, request of the Solid Waste Committee to modify the city's recycling program to better align with current market conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's been some significant changes in the recycling market, and the city's recycling program needs some adjustments. The recycling revenues have always been cyclical and volatile. However, recently, there's been some big changes in the market, and it's been a result of the Chinese market changes, and they're having some import issues, and the Chinese government is issuing major pollution control initiatives, which affects global recycling worldwide. Many municipalities are now eliminating their recycling programs altogether. They're unable to sell their recyclable materials, and they're having to pay tipping fees to dispose of it. Because of these changes worldwide and our region, the Solid Waste Committee has met several times. The committee is looking to modify the recycling program by eliminating glass, number three through seven plastics, and possibly boxboard. So just to give you a little bit of history, the city has been receiving glass from the residents, and then we've been shipping it off to other municipalities to use as fill. They're no longer accepting that, so now we're having to dump it in our MSW compactors. The city currently mixes its boxboard with cardboard loads, which is sold to mills, and they're requesting that there's clean loads of U.S.-corrogated cardboard only. The city could increase its bale load by $2 a ton if they remove that boxboard. Counselor Fortier and I have been discussing, and he'll make some more comments on that. The city currently contracts with Acadia Disposal District. ADD is a quasi municipality, excuse me, municipal corporation made up of five island towns, and it coordinates with solid waste and disposal and recycling for these five towns. We receive $26,000 from ADD as well as 20% of the recyclables, and this helps to offset the employment of the recycling center attendant. Excuse me, ma'am. I need some water. I've included two years' worth of recycling numbers in your-
That's a fresh glass.
Thank you. Oh, it's been a long meeting. I've included two years' worth of recycling numbers for you in your packet, and the average over the past two years, we've had 178 tons of cardboard, 115 tons of newspaper, all plastics, has been 15 tons, and six tons of tin. If these changes are approved tonight, the city staff will be notifying by different communication, by website, by Facebook, or also be doing a mass mailing to all residents. We'll be posting here at City Hall, as well as at the transfer station and recycling center, and we'd like to advertise in the Ellsworth American as well, just to let the public know. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the Public Works Director. She's here to answer any questions. And then Counselor Fortier is part of the Solid Waste Committee.
Comments, questions? Counselor.
I think it's important to note that, I think it's going to, I would suspect it's going to be upsetting to people to hear that we are going to be accepting certain items in the recycling center. But I think it's important to understand that if we do accept those, it's a misnomer. We aren't recycling. If we don't have a market where we can send the stuff to be recycled, then it's landfill. And that's what that is. If we cannot send it to be recycled, then it goes into a landfill. People think they're recycling things that they are not.
It would go to perk.
To perk.
And burned as energy.
There's some stuff that-
Either way.
Not everything goes to perk and is burned as energy. There is stuff that goes to the landfills, when they think that they're recycling the material.
Right, but the vast majority would.
And guess what? For four months of summer, perk bypassed to a landfill. So she's correct.
Yes.
The entire load is going to a landfill-
Because they were-
And not being burnt up.
They were putting in new equipment or updating.
Oh, I understand, but I'm saying that it's unfortunate.
Oh, the whole recycling thing is unfortunate, the way it's turned in the last nine months or so.
I have served on the Legislative Policy Committee with Maine Municipal for four years, and I tell you, the hierarchy of solid waste in the state of Maine is screwed up. There shouldn't be anything, anything going into a landfill that hasn't been sorted for recyclables, burnt for combustibles, and then everything else can go into a landfill. This stuff of putting garbage, because it's $7 a ton cheaper, into a landfill in Oldtown instead of creating electricity with it and reducing its size by 65%, and then going to landfill is ludicrous. I think the hierarchy in the state of Maine is totally screwed up. That's my soapbox.
But we have to deal with it now, right?
Yeah, we do.
Yes, we do.
What about Ego Maine?
Too expensive to get it there.
Yes.
I just wanted to add as well that we did speak with Acadia Disposal District, and they're comfortable with making these changes as well, and notifying their residents.
The system, my own curiosity, the system that we have now is, well, it's an honor Even, I'll admit, I'm confused by it. I didn't realize until a couple of weeks ago, Bernie, I think it was you that told me, my tofu containers, I've been putting in the plastic, I believe it was those containers I mentioned. Come to find out-
They're not recyclable.
And I look at them, yeah, they're plastic.
You'll have to go back to Hamburg.
But how would we, how are we going to, I'll say enforce, and I don't mean enforce as in, hey, you can't do that, but how are we going to tell the tofu lovers of the world, hey, you can't, that goes in your garbage? Are we going to have somebody at the front door?
And that question, Mr. Chairman, before Lisa gets up there, is one part of my opposition. I don't think January 1 is enough time to educate us and all of ADD. So as we get further in this discussion, I'm going to ask for staff decided extension if we're not ready, because I don't think we can be ready to educate the public and all of Mount Desert, all this side of Mount Desert Island in 40 days.
As Counselor Fortier mentioned, I think the biggest thing is, the biggest key, and we talked about, is education. And the timeframe, I think, is just, it's for you guys to decide how quickly it can happen. But one of the things I wanted to note is, you know, a lot of people think one through seven plastics, which is what we currently take, means, oh, it's recyclable, because it's got a number on the bottom. There's a lot of reasons why things, even though they have a one through seven on the bottom, are not recyclable, and that's because of contamination. Contamination because your antifreeze jug still has antifreeze in the bottom of it. They don't want the antifreeze, and then that's contaminant, gets thrown away. Your tofu containers-
Contaminant.
Contaminant.
Hazardous material.
But the point of it is, is it has to be a clean material. That's the number one thing, it has to be cleaned, because if there's yogurt left on it, or there's Tide left in your jug, contaminant, has to be thrown away. So that's all part of the educational process. It's not just a one through, you know, it's not just a number. It's a number plus the process to get it to recyclables, you know, what the homeowner has to do to make it that it can be recyclable. So I think it's all going to be a huge educational process, and whether we decide to, there was talk of having someone working at the transfer station, whether it's a volunteer basis or a paid basis, myself, Bernie, some, I mean, the combination of all those ideas, to have somebody there helping for the first week, two weeks, three weeks, whatever, to get the process moving forward. And also, another idea was to update somebody-
Signage.
Signage and the holes that take where you put your recyclables, so that you know they will sign a milk jug, so this is where your milk jugs go, and that kind of thing. So I think there's a whole big plan or a process that's going to be part of this. It may be step-by-step, but even baby steps in the right direction, I think, are better.
I was up there last week, and there was a, just as you enter, on the floor to the right, there was a child's car seat. It isn't recyclable. I'm pretty sure that it went right into the hopper, that someone picked it up, carried it up to the hopper and threw it in. It's those things that I don't, I haven't seen a solution yet to stop people from leaving their junk. And I don't mean it in that sense, but I'm sure that there are people out there, oh, this is a perfectly fine car seat, you know, somebody else can use it. They're very well-intentioned. But whether the car seat has expired, whether it has tears, whether the straps have been stretched to a point where they can't be used, how do we stop the, let's call it the infiltration of unwanted stuff?
I think part of it is, just some of it will be our trained staff at the transfer station. A lot of this year, we've been, had a lot of staff changeover and, what's the better word, understaffing, maybe? So hopefully, we have a new person starting tomorrow, actually, and hopefully with some additional our staff, as well as, again, educating the public.
We can also stop sending the message that it is a place for exchange. That wall of books encourages people to trade and swap stuff. I mean, there are places to do that, but the recycling center, unless that's what you want to have there, once you start doing that, once you start, you know, saying that people can swap and trade books there, it's going to bleed over into stuff. If it is a recycling center period, and the only business conducted there is recycling, they'll be less likely to leave other things.
I agree. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick items is, our people are really good compared to what comes in on the packers from the island. When you get a packer of plastic in from the island through ADD, and it's got a swimming pool, it's got plastic containers full of kitty litter, it's got plastic black sheeting, the education has to go further than just Ellsworth, and that's why I worry about the short fuse here. But down there, we have a way to take care of it. We reject the load, put it in the dumpster, and send them a bill. So we're whole, but when that stuff gets left at the recycling center, the Cassie, you and I, on our next $3 ticket, help pay to dispose of that. So that's my fear, is that people are putting everything they want in there and not what we want. So education is going to be, I'm sorry, the wheelchair that's going to keep this afloat is, and I'll throw this out, this may be something that we could interest a COA intern for a couple of weeks for a project, to monitor and help educate people that come there. They've been active in Ellsworth with the Codberg cleanup and other processes, so that may very well be the eco class. That's just to throw it out.
They may have suggestions on how to improve our processes, too. Maybe there are resources out there that we don't know about that can help us with our recycling program, perhaps.
Why reinvent it? Let's steal it.
Steal it, that's what I'm talking about.
I see a person waiting very patiently back there.
State Representative Nicole Gahuston.
It's not, it's not official yet. Nicole Gahowski, 151 Bangor Road in Ellsworth. Thank you all for entertaining this topic, and especially to the Solid Waste Committee for researching what is really trying for the whole country right now. I just want to say, as you think about this process, there are obvious ways to do things and sometimes less obvious ways. One thing I would suggest is to not send us all mail, which is going to cost the city money, and additionally, we won't have a place to recycle that. To add to frustration, I would recommend more signage. Maybe you even hang a banner. Think about large ways to educate us. Additionally, the high school has a green club or action team. Maybe if you're looking for volunteers for education, they would be a good resource. I wonder, and this is thinking about the long-term budget, all the things that we're diverting, especially glass, which are very heavy, are saving us money from being shipped to the perk plant, where I don't think the glass burns. I think they end up crushing it and using it for landfill cover, probably. So I would suggest that we consider, I don't know, I don't know much it's costing us to take it to Penobscot right now and landfill it, or is there a place we can landfill glass locally? Some hole that needs to be filled in that somebody created? I don't know. But it's a lot of money, I think, we're going to spend on shipping, in addition to already spending, and that should be considered as well. So just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Any further comments or questions? Counselor Moore?
No, just-
Okay. You ready? Did you have anything else, Tammy?
Just standing up, thank you for any further questions.
Is there a motion? Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Solid Waste Committee to modify the city's recycling program to better align with current market conditions. This includes eliminating all glass, boxboard, and number three through seven plastics. Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer friendly amendment to include an as-of date.
Or to be determined by their-
Do you have a date in mind?
If we pass the motion as it was stated, it starts today.
I understand.
Gary, I'm sorry. Is that when?
If we pass it tonight, it's as of tonight. So I'm just asking for friendly amendment to include-
January 1, 2019.
I'd request February 1, give them time for education.
I think you can spend a lot of time trying to educate, and your magic pool is still going to appear in that box of recycling. But February 1, 2019 is fine with me.
It is.
As a start date. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
I'll give the bad news to my wife tonight about the tofu.
Put them in the blender, I think they taste pretty good.
Whole thing.
Item 22, executive session to discuss labor contracts in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6D.
So moved.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I believe this item was put on here that there may be a need to have an executive session, but in consultation with legal counsel before the meeting, it does not appear to be the case.
Remove my motion.
Okay.
Remove, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second.
Motion and-
Return me.
I'm getting there. Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
And right before you adjourned, you removed number-